Good afternoon, we'll call the August eighth regular meeting of the Urno Town Council to order. All councilors are attending with Councillor Kenny and Councillor Robertson attending remotely. Others are here at council chambers with me. Agenda review, we have no changes. And approval of the minutes of July eleventh and July eighteenth, I have a motion to approve please. Seconded, any corrections, additions, deletions? All those in favor, or do we have to do roll calls now, no, because we have two remote people?
Right.
So let's do a roll call, please.
Councillor Barry.
In favor.
Councillor Gardner, in favor. Councillor Wingard.
In favor.
Councillor Berthensup, in favor. And Councillor Lawrie.
In favor.
And Councillor Robertson.
In favor.
Councillor Kenny.
In favor.
The vote is seven in favor and there are no votes.
Thank you Nancy. Next item is election of council vice chair. It's an item we've talked about several times and made an adjustment and I tried to accommodate it. I'll open the lower for nominations, but I would like to nominate Megan Gardner as our council vice chair. Are there any other nominations?
I would like to second, but I also have a question about the process and the policy. As we move, before we move forward.
Any further nominations? Then let's have your question, Cheryl.
So, so my question is, first of all, when we, as we proceed with this new position, with this new vice chair position, will we also be voting on vice chair when we vote for council chair? So this will be a position that will last until council chair has stepped down and then we will vote again for council chair and vice chair again. Is that how this will work?
That is correct, yeah, this is an annual appointment. And we have annually elected our chair, which is a one-year position. Can be reelected, as you know, in, on our March or April meeting depending upon attendance of council meetings. We'd like to have everybody here, we do that. And we'll do this very same thing with the vice chair position, it'll be an annual appointment.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, any other questions or comments? Then let's have a vote on the vice chair.
Councillor Perry.
In favor.
Councillor Gardner, in favor. Councillor Robertson.
In favor.
Councillor Carter. Councillor Berthensup, in favor. Councillor Kenny.
In favor.
And Councillor Lawrie. Thanks everybody. Seven in favor and there are no votes.
Thanks Nancy. Okay, we'll move on to public hearings, we had a couple of public hearings tonight. Public hearing A, to consider a vigilance license for FWOBLLC, a food truck located at fifty-eight Main Street, which is directly across the street from us. Patrick.
Hello, Patrick SD, co-reformment officer, and I'm also representing police and fire and town clerk with our recommendation. And we asked for a recommendation for approval based on our onsite inspection when they arrive with their vehicle and they'll set all up for us and we'll do our inspection.
So this is on the consent agenda and we get to that point in time where we move approval from the consent agenda. We'll place it under new business and we will do a conditional approval subject to Patrick's successful inspection when they arrive. Okay? Then moving on to public here.
If there was any public.
Yes, I'm sure, well, let me ask council if there's any questions or comments on this item first. And are there any public questions or comments? Any public?
Nothing online.
Thank you. Then we'll close public hearing A, move on to public hearing B. To consider a contract zone application for Tyler Technology Incorporated located five College Avenue, tax map fourteen dash, excuse me, nineteen dash four, lot sixty-six. The application processed to change the zoning district for the parcel from medium density residential to village commercial with certain restrictions put in place. And I believe that's for Kyle.
Yes. Hi everyone, Patrick Sler, town planner. Just gonna put a graphic up on the screen just for, as a reference point during the conversation. Okay. So there's a contract zone agreement between Tyler Technologies and the town. And just for a little background for anyone listening is kind of first time to a contract zone agreement. What it is really is an agreement between the town and the property owner to rezone a property to allow a specific activity to take place. But at the same time add on restrictions that a normal zone change wouldn't have, that sort of is able to blend in the proposed use with the surrounding area. So this property was one of several on the townwide zoning map that was marked as being right for a contract zone change. Tyler Technologies approached the town to propose an office, a new office structure going in roughly the same area that the existing university in hotel was in. You know, this graphics sort of shows the proposed layout, what the site would look like. And that's sort of a reflection of the standards that were created in the draft contract zone originally. The goal of the contract zone specifically, the biggest thing is to change the zone from the medium density residential district to the village commercial district. That's the kind of fundamental piece that would allow the, the office use to take place. On the property, the hotel is kind of long been a legally non-conforming use. By changing the zone though, it allows for the office to be considered a conforming use and allowed there going forward, it also allowed for a bit of an expansion as to what the hotel had existing. You know, so when we were looking at standards as to, okay, what sorts of restrictions or limitations might apply here? We looked at things like increasing setbacks, you know, where the village commercial doesn't really have any setbacks whatsoever to the property line, you know, here where there's residential areas to the northwest and east. We maintain those medium density residential setbacks and on the rear property line, you know, where you see the building setback almost a hundred feet from that kind of western property line. The contract zone requires a fifty-foot setback there, which is over double what the MDR would require. You know, the, the primary purpose of the contract zone, aside from allowing the office use in general, switching to the village commercial was for parking. An office of this size, under our normal off-street parking requirements would be required to put in well over a hundred parking spaces, that seems excessive for what the applicant wanted to do here and specifically the location. You know, being close to the university where a lot of potential interns and traffic can be coming from, the proximity to downtown. You know, that level of parking seemed unnecessary just to have, but also in relation to the river and the environmental impacts that that would have on that site. So the, the village commercial allows businesses to not provide a, a set number of parking spaces. So we were able to write into the contract zone that a base minimum of sixty would be applied, but they wouldn't have to go above and beyond it and meet that normal ordinance standard that other districts require. So the result of the, the contract zone, you know, really the limitation set in that document really limit the site to be developed in roughly the same footprint that it is now. You know, you can see the, the yellow line that kind of runs across the property there is the marker for the shoreline zone. The contract zone limited the amount of development that could actually happen in the shoreline zone. So you see a pretty small, you know, just a really small portion of that patio that goes across that line. So the building is actually further outside the, the contract zone or the shoreline zone than, you know, what's currently there. So, so the contract really aimed at, you know, having a site continue in the future that's roughly similar to what we have now. The planning board reviewed the project in, in two steps. The first is providing a recommendation to town council as to whether or not the contract zone meets the comprehensive plan with any zone change, whether it's a town initiated change or a contract zone agreement. The zone change has to be consistent with the goals of the, the comprehensive plan. The planning board found the project and the contract zone to be consistent with the comp plan due to a number of the, the goals and recommendations outlined there. You know, some of those quite hard to read there, but you know, the decline in family households in the community, having an, an employment opportunity in town that can attract those younger families and provide that demographic into the town, giving them a stable income to afford housing in the community, building on that university relationship and some of the innovative things that they do, that's all really spoken pretty frequently of in the comp plan. And this project really built off of that. Outside of that, I can show one of the other standards in the comp plan was that the village commercial design standards would have to be utilized. So the applicant provided some renderings of what the, you know, the planning board conditionally approved the site plan application for the project in the July meeting. That conditional approval is obviously based on whether or not the town council approves the contract zone to allow the, the project and the rezone to go through. But that site plan, you know, came with some renderings of what the, the actual site would look like and building there, so. You know, you can see here that it meets the design standards with the contract zone emphasizes and are required in the village commercial. You can see the, the lawn down to the river is roughly maintained based on this con, the contract zone standards. The, those village commercial design standards that the contract zone requires are largely to make sure that commercial buildings keep somewhat of that residential feel to them, using certain material types, having certain roof pitch, those sorts of things. And, you know, the architect and applicant, you know, went through an effort to make sure that that was the case. Outside of that, I think that pretty much goes over everything with the contract zone that we've discussed and the process it's gone through so far. But I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone might have. So the planning board had a couple of conditions of approval. I was thinking more, just the contract. Oh, oh, right, yeah, so the, the planning board did not have any recommendations as far as amendments to the contract zone goes. The real discussion that came at the planning board meeting was geared more towards the site plan application and the construction process, you know, potential, you know, noise, lighting, those sorts of things that come up through that process, that's really separate from the contract zone. Yeah, there were no, none of the public comment at the meeting was really geared towards the contracts itself. And the planning board also didn't have any specific comments to the contracts.
So we have reviewed the contract zone in committee. I'm wondering if there are any public attendees who have questions at this point?
Nothing online.
Okay. Council members, any comments or questions from you?
I have a quick question for Kyle. At one point we discussed an easement for wastewater or sewer line that had to get discussed with the applicant.
I, that's been resolved. So I think that was something we viewed as that could be done outside of the contract zone. That that could be a separate discussion if it was needed, that didn't need to be tackled through, through the contracts.
Could you, could you, what, I didn't quite, Jeff, was your question with regards to, did you say a sewer line?
It, it may be stormy, I'm not sure, Kyle, there was a an easement for the town to maintain some kind of infrastructure on one corner of that property. Wiser heads than mine would have discussed that. I think Sophie would like to come there.
I have two things. Yeah, I, I hope you can hear me okay. I have two things, first, Kyle's absolutely right that we are working, going to work with the property owner to formalize an, an easement for that storm sewer, that little offshoot that we did not have anything for. The second reason I'm waving my hand is because I can see that John Banks has a question, his hand is up at least.
Can I ask just a question also? I thought at some point in time we talked about keeping public river access at that location. Maybe I, maybe I didn't, but I thought I heard that and I'm curious if that is still the fact or if we're still looking to do that.
So we did, we did a little bit more research there, Leo, and there has never been public access to the river there, the, there is a sewer easement. Tracy contacted me after our meeting to assure me that she has never formally given any kind of permission for public access there. So I, I think it's, it's hard to kind of pull that in now.
Agreed, just wanted, someone had brought it up and asked about it and I remembered it, so that makes sense, thank you.
And I am allowing John Banks to speak now.
Thank you. Go ahead, John.
Can you hear me?
Yes, speak up as much as you can though.
Okay, yeah, thanks for the presentation and thanks for the opportunity to comment. Just a quick question. I couldn't tell from the map that Kyle was showing if the lawn actually goes all the way to the river. Or I'm wondering if there is a, any kind of a buffer strip or a filter strip in there that would be protective of the water quality in the still water. If that's all going to be lawn, I'm sure they're going to maintain it. And they may be using pesticides or herbicides. And so I would be concerned if that lawn went all the way to the river without any kind of a buffer strip or filter strip. Since it is within the shoreline zone. So that's my question and my concern, thank you.
Thanks John. Response?
Sure, so the project, I mean, it's stepping a little more into the, the site plan aspect than the, the contract zone aspect, but there was no proposed change or development going down the, the lawn to the river. So it would operate and function the same way really it does now. The only change leading down the hill is the orientation of the path, where the path kind of goes down the middle of the lawn currently. The walkway would be oriented more to the existing tree line and sort of hubbed tree line going down to the gazebo. But the gazebo would remain in the same place, that walkway would be shifted a little. But outside of that, there would be, you know, except for some ornamental vegetation leading down that walkway, there would be no kind of functional changes to that, that part of the property.
Thank you Kyle. Any other questions?
I would just say I appreciate Councillor Kenny bringing up the issue of public access, and I understand that there has not ever been like formal access given to people, but I hope that there are no plans to, you know, overly restrict public access out into the waterfront, because I, you know, I think it's a nice place where I've sat many times, saved my lunch without a new problem. And it doesn't seem like there's a plan for them to do that. Just not embracing.
Yeah, I'd like to second that and, you know, with the reiteration that my hope is folks who are working with Tyler can continue the, the good relationship that it sounds like you've built and their intention to be sort of neighborly about the whole thing, both with regards to putting up sound protected fences and other things to make the neighbors who may be impacted by construction feel that they've been heard and, and, you know, preserving the sort of informal access to the river that many people in town I think have valued over the years.
Well, we have representatives from Tyler Technology who are this tonight.
Oh, great.
Here are those comments.
Hopefully you're hearing those comments, my friend.
Anything else? Okay, we'll close public hearing B. This is an item that will be voted on at our September meeting. So that closes our public hearing and our vote will be in September. So moving on to acknowledgements by council. Anybody have acknowledgements to make, I, I'm gonna make, I'll, I'll start with one. I'd like to acknowledge our own council member Jeff Wingard, who has been recognized as the state social studies teacher of the year. Wow. Quite an honor.
Jeff?
Congratulations. Any other acknowledgements?
I would like to acknowledge the partnership between the town and the university, particularly on the rad camp, which has been a lifesaver for my family this summer. My daughter did a week at the beginning of the summer and she just finished up a week. And it's really for two working parents, very, very useful, and a lot of my colleagues at the university also have their kids there. And I think, you know, summer camp can be extremely expensive, so it's really nice that we have an option like that in town.
Great. Anything else? Cheryl.
Hi, this is not as much an acknowledgement as an announcement and, and this is a kind of a shout out to Megan Hess, who is our, I never, I never remember her title, environmental, Sophie can help me, specialist coordinator. Anyway, we are working on trying to get clients for window dressers. And our window dressers build will be in October. Megan has flyers out at the library, she's got some flyers at Amber Sand. We have enough spaces now to really kind of open it up and push for people who are interested in getting window inserts as a way to reduce their heating costs this winter. So we've been out measuring, we've been out, we've been to VZ and Bangor and Orono. We're going out again, so it's, Bangor's not doing a build this year. We are the only ones in the area that are doing a, a build of this sort. And I just want to reach out to our public and people who are listening and listening on Facebook, just to kind of keep it, keep the momentum going that we really would like to serve as many people as possible. It's a, everyone and I, and Megan can, can also confirm that we've talked to said the cost of putting these inserts in their windows is a tank of gas, a tank of oil right now, so it is, it's, it's a worthy cause, it's a worthy process. And we are one of several in Maine that are, that are offering this service to our municipality. So just want to do a shout out to Megan for the work that she's doing. And I also want to do, I also want to, you know, do a plug for people who are interested in really sealing up their windows this winter in anticipation of high heating costs, we don't know where they're going, but I can, I can tell you that people have testified that they have reduced their costs significantly, so. Not as much as it, well, I guess an acknowledgement and an announcement, so, thank you so much.
Cheryl. Anything else under acknowledgements?
I'd like to acknowledge the Orono farmer's market as well as home gardeners in the town of Orono who are providing local food to one another and I appreciate it a lot.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, ready to move on? On to unfinished business. Order twenty-two dash sixty-five, an order approving ordinance amendments to the town of Orono's code of ordinances, chapter eighteen, land use, section eighteen dash thirty-one definitions, section eighteen dash one oh six, schedule abuses, and section eighteen dash one thirty-one home occupations to amend zoning and performance standards for home stays. And this item has been postponed from April of two thousand and twenty-two, so that's why it's under unfinished business. So Kyle, I guess you are the person to thank you, and the second.
Yeah, so I can give a
I got a second.
I can second a brief.
Thank you.
Just to sort of give a recap of, I guess, this whole timeline. So the, the comprehensive plan originally, you know, the twenty fifteen plan recommended to create this hierarchy of lodging types that fall under travelers accommodations, including hotels, bed and breakfasts, and then home stays, which, you know, at the time were a very specific thing or seen that way, where the most common practice was, you know, renting out a bedroom in your house on a, a short-term basis through various websites that were popping up at the time. That ordinance amendment happened, I believe, in twenty sixteen or seventeen. In twenty nineteen, looking back at it, I believe that was the first time we revisited the idea of short-term rentals as they were starting to become more popular. And they were starting to expand, you know, those types of services like Airbnb or whatever, your V O. And, you know, we're starting to expand and move away just from the bedroom in, in someone's house to people purchasing entire properties for the sole point of renting them out on a short-term basis through these types of services. So at that time, staff attended some different trainings on those sorts of things, you know, we started researching what other communities were doing around the state and around the country and, you know, all the different sorts of methods that people were taking. We considered with council through the committee process, a few different options. You know, the, the current ordinance at the time, the way it was set up was that home stays, you know, as that sort of renting out a room in an owner occupied single-family home, that was an allowed use in the ordinance, which the fact that it defined that specifically as that thing that was allowed meant that these new types of short-term rentals would conversely not be considered allowable. And we were noticing that these were popping up in the community, people wanted to rent out you know, entire units, whether in a, you know, a, a second dwelling on the property or, you know, just a, you know, purchase a single-family home for the point of renting it out that way. So the goal is to expand the ordinance to really allow and capture that sort of activity as it's something, you know, that the council at the time thought should be allowed and everyone should be able to do it. But we needed to create a mechanism in the ordinance to do so. You know, we looked at altering the rental registration to account for not only long-term rentals, but short-term rentals and doing it that way. The reason we, I, I think sort of at the time geared away from that was that, you know, home stays were an existing thing in our land use ordinance, it was seen as not just a a residential use, you know, while you're using a residential structure or a dwelling unit for the activity, there is this sort of natural lodging component to the use that sort of brought in some level of commercial nature to it. You know, you have more turnover than a traditional rental property for a more long-term tenant. Things like that were really the, the reason that, you know, we kept the idea of, okay, let's look at this as a A land use and permitted through the land use ordinance and the zoning ordinance. So from there, we aim to. Kind of create two different types of home stays, one for owner occupied properties and one for non owner occupied properties. In both cases, they would be allowable in every district. It's just that. In really in residential districts. For the non owner occupied type of home stays, they would require minor applications to the planning board. To review things like. Traffic and residential appearance and all those sorts of things that, you know, a typical like a home business would abide by. So that sort of brings us to the the current iteration of the ordinance where home stays are broken down into these two types. Non owner occupied versus owner occupied. The ordinance aims to allow all types, whether it's in a single family home. Or a multi-family where one of the units is being rented out on a short term basis. It aims to be flexible to property owners who. Aren't sure whether they want a long term rental or a short term rental, where it can be registered. As a long term rental and also permitted as a short term rental and can be used interchangeably. Which, you know, with whichever way the the property owner wants to kind of at that time. So I I think that's a kind of a general overview of the timeline. Obviously, we've been over this a number of times. But for anyone just kind of tuning in at the end, that should be kind of a a brief recap of how we got here. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I have questions for council. So I guess it's not so much a question as just. Sort of, I I've been reading all of this again and again since our last meeting because. I mean, we had such interesting discussion, but it's really. What at first to me was quite dense language. I think I've come around to be mostly in support of of this amendment. Especially the. After reviewing the initial definitions in chapter eighteen. Making more explicit stuff around owner occupation, expanding stuff to thirty days. We're moving a kitchen requirement here that restricts people unnecessarily doing this. However. I think in its current state, I actually feel rather uncomfortable voting for this with for two reasons, but lesser of the two being. That I think the requirements are on the local agents who are actually rather restrictive. And the more important one. Is that this maintains. On page three of what we've been here maintains the original language, which is that. Somebody can only have an Airbnb if they're registered to vote in Orano. And I think that unduly restricts the ability. People who are not citizens to be able to operate and run their own land as they said. So just throwing that out for discussion. Thank you.
Yeah, that that issue with the a person shall not be registered to vote anywhere but Orano. That does exclude non citizen residents. Is my one beef with it currently as well. That's something that unfortunately doesn't seem to have. Changed from the old ordinance to the present, but to me seems like a change that should be made going forward.
I guess I. Would like to like to weigh in again. I I still believe that this belongs under the rental registration program and. And not under the land use. Because it's it really, it it's not a home stay and it's it's not a home occupation still. I still can't. Reconcile that in in my mind. You know, we've created a definition. Home stay too, that is really entirely outside the definition of home stay. If you if you look up home stay, it involves someone living. With you, it's not. And then we've we've now, I mean, it it just fits so much better, I think, under the rental registration program. I also, you know, I've never looked at the home stay until. Ordinance until we've gotten into this these past couple of meetings and and I really do think. We might need to reconsider and take a, take a fresh look at the entire home stay ordinance and consider. If that might be some sort of income ba- income based discrimination. Because if I if I think about who, you know, and especially if I think about what's coming up this year potentially. I think the the person that's gonna rent a room in their house is most likely doing it to make ends meet. And I think we may see more of that with with oil prices, despite the great work you're doing Cheryl. And and grocery prices, I think. So. Again, I don't, I don't see someone that's well off necessarily gonna gonna be forced to rent a room out in their room. So, you know, in this. We're talking about Jedi and whatnot. I think I think that should, we should look at that. Entire ordinance through that lens and and give that some consideration as well. So I'd like to see this come back around.
I think the council has made some good points. My, I I bothered our county manager. This week, she gave me some great insight into how the process had unfolded over the past several years. Things that Kyle just referenced this on. I, my fear is that whenever we try to specifically define. Categories of use as they are affected by emerging technology. That we can't predict the next emerging technology and that our ordinance. May be restrictive or out of date or in some way prejudicial against people making full use of their property. As the next new unforeseen technology emerges. And I, I agree with Leo that the lightest touch that we could have. Is to put these kinds of operations under the rental registration. Umbrella rather than creating a new category of information, a new new definition. So. I would say it's probably been a great process for us to go through. Certainly, our town staff has done a tremendous amount of work. Trying to to work the definition as fit, but I think maybe we should rethink. The process of just saying, well, we've been in it for five years isn't sufficient to.
I'd say for my part, being in it for five years is not the sole reason that I feel strongly in support of these changes. I think that we did identify an issue that something. Was, there was an attempt to address something that did not foresee emergent technologies. And the timing of that worked out so that we were, and I know. Counselor Kenny disagrees with this, but our legal counsel has told us that it was a practice that people were engaging in that is not legally performing in the town. And so the goal is to figure out, the the goal from start to finish in this five year process was to figure out how to support. Local people in using their properties. Either to make some ends meet or maybe to make a little income, extra income, or maybe to have a commercial enterprise. So. The point all along was to was to try to figure out how to best. Tackle some of the concerns that come along potentially with. Airbnb type properties in neighborhoods that we see, and that is an equity issue. Driving up the cost of rental properties in many communities and negatively impacting particularly people of color. That is not, as far as we know, happening in Orano, but that doesn't mean that it might not. So. Figuring out a way to wrestle with that potential drawback of those properties without over regulating them. And I think that this strikes a very good balance where we can. Get a good idea of exactly what type of use is going on and support the folks who are who are trying to make that use. While also trying to keep a little bit of a steady hand on that particular market. And I feel that like I I hear the concerns. That folks have voiced. I still feel very strongly and not just because of the amount of time and feedback that went into this. But I still feel very strongly that this is. A very skillfully crafted way to handle a very complicated problem.
Sophie or Kyle, any response to the concerns that have been raised?
I I mean, one thing I would say is whether it's in the, just from a rental registration versus land use kind of thing. If we're talking about the owner occupied types. Under, you know, the way the ordinance would currently lay it out in the land use ordinance, you'd be required to get a. A building permit or, you know, in this case, you know, all home occupations, they. It's not even technically a permit. People fill out the permit, but it's more of a a means of. It's a, it's a one time, I think, thirty dollar fee. So from an income perspective. You know, rental registration is what twenty-five dollars a unit and it's an annual thing. So. You would actually be. If we're talking in owner occupied one where you're just getting the permit, you're getting a one time permit versus rental registration every year. So from a, just a permitting fee cost, it's actually less having it in the land use ordinance than. Through the rental registration.
Just to clarify, I'm, I was specifically talking about the non owner occupied and and that that's what I have considered. That that to me just doesn't fit. Yeah, I I hear what you're saying and I think you could make that case that the owner occupied, which is again. Completely different in my, in my view, but yeah, that that's there now and I and I could see what I see what you're saying. So I appreciate that.
I I mean, outside of that, I I think. Yeah, I I think the main reason here that we we looked at it through the lan- the lens of the land use ordinance. Was the very lodging nature of the use where the rental registration. Deals with people living in the community and. You know, we looked at it as a more commercial use of the property, specifically the non owner occupied. Types where, you know, you have the potential of people to buy multiple. Housing opportunities in town and convert them into. You know, really non. Dwelling units. They become these, these units specifically used for transient lodging occupancy. By definition. So.
You know, Kyle, you're reminding me of something that was quite a feature in the conversation a few years ago when we first made the shift. To kind of looking at it in this specific structure, which is, there was a lot of conversation about. We do not want to over regulate this at this point in time. We absolutely do not want to over regulate it. We're just trying to make it legal, right? But at the same time. We need to have some way to keep an eye on it to see if we do start having companies from out of area or out of state. Who want to come in and instead of trying to build the next giant residential student housing complex. The next market is let's buy up all of the available single family homes or multifamily homes and turn them into. Places for out of towners to stay when they're coming to visit their kids at Main or to, you know. Recreating the area, right? So one of the things that featured largely in that conversation was, we don't want to over regulate now. But it would be. It it would be very dangerous for us to turn a blind eye or not have any way to track or see. Whether that kind of encroaching commercial activity was happening, because that is the sort of thing. When we talk about our comp plan, we're supposed to be trying to create more housing opportunities that are affordable. For young families, for working professionals, for people who work for the University of Maine, most of whom do not live in Orano. And if we have this market that grows. Where some corporate entities or large entities do want to come in and buy properties and start turning them into Airbnbs. Like we see in so many communities across this country, we will start pricing people out even worse than they're sometimes priced out now by student rental housing. So that was a big feature of that conversation. It's not over regulating it now, but making sure we're doing our responsibility as counselors. To keep an eye on that in case that trend were to come up. And I'm not sure how, I would need to be convinced. That the rental registration option would provide us even half a chance of having as much. Long term view of that potential developing problem.
I may not be as privy to the nuances of rental registration portion of this conversation. I actually, in reading this, I do appreciate that. In in many ways, it's actually less restrictive than the current ordinances in ways I think are really positive for homeowners and for communities surrounding these homes. So I am for those things. The owner occupation, but the breakdown of how that works, I think I am for. But I I think on its own, if we're opening up this language, the the voting and whatever requirement is enough for me to say this is not acceptable.
Can we get Sophie, do you have any feedback on that particular aspect?
Um, I think that's just a holdover that didn't get captured in the past. I don't, I think you can, a owner occupied can mean lots of things. It can mean the individual. As opposed to a corporation actually living within the home. I don't think. That that person necessarily needs to be a voter in the community to be a resident of the community. So I would agree with that. I do think that it is enough of a. Revision to the ordinance that we wouldn't be able to simply amend on the floor. That is a substant- substantive. Element. The other thing I would just shed a little bit of light on here is. You know, what direction council wants to go in is a, that's a policy matter and council needs to figure out. It's general policy direction and staff goes and does the technical piece to meet that policy direction. What I continue to hear, and I know it's because people don't wanna, I don't know, believe me or. Read it that way, but it's not a matter of just putting this in rental registration or land use. It's a matter of the fact that right now the use is not allowed. So you've got to do something. To make the use allowed before you put it in rental registration. I would say, and I don't know if I should hold my comments till after. How about this? Can I hold my comments till after a vote and then share with you my comments?
So as I'm listening to the conversation. I I think there's a couple of directions we could go and we could just vote on it, see what the vote is. Either approve it or we don't approve it. There is a change that needs to be made that Sophie has identified that we we've talked about, Rob. That is something that that we just can't do on the fly here. We need to take some time to do it. So I think we could table this. For tonight, have that change made and then see if there's a majority that supports it. Is there other? Are there other options that people would like to offer?
I would like to ask, maybe I'd like to ask a question of Megan. You know, she's mentioned a couple of times that. Part of the idea behind this was to, you know, keep a steady hand on these and to, or keep an eye on these kinds of rentals. My understanding from everything we've heard to date is this isn't a. This isn't an approval process, the way it's being set up. It's it's, there's nothing that I, at least from what I understand, there's nothing. That we could do in this new language to prevent or to stop somebody from doing it. And I I think so. So i- if it's a matter of tracking it, I mean, I I certainly think it's about. You know, it's three words on the rental registration application that could accomplish that as well. So I I don't, I don't see where. One is, one is better from a keeping an eye on it perspective than than the other one would be.
So as Sophie pointed out, it does need to be made legal before it can go on the rental registration, which is a great point that has been missed so far. But being being able to quantify this as. Specifically setting it apart, as Kyle has mentioned several times, this is not the same thing. This is an acknowledgement that it is not the same thing as renting a house to a family or college student or a group of people for a year who are going to be. Primarily residential and be part of the community. Treating it this way sets it apart because it is acknowledging that there is a commercial aspect to it. I don't think that it's going to be helpful for us to get into the weeds on this, Leo, because we. Aren't seeing eye to eye on this, which is fine. I think Tom's presented a great suggestion for moving forward and we should, I would like to move on.
I would like to say something. Thank you before before we move on. Also being part of this process for the last four years. Another issue, and I'm, I am in support of this. Another issue is safety. And we had, we had long conversations with what kind of. Structures and how are they, you know, are they being safe? Is there, are there fire hazards? Are there coating, you know? Things that we need to, that we need to keep track of. So so there's another, you know, there's another issue aside from the fact that. There are people who buy single family homes. there are people who buy single family homes and um and use them as Airbnb's. And that is a fact and that is happening in Orono. But but are they safe? Are they, you know, are they in compliance? And right now, my understanding and the big understanding is is that people that are doing this are not in compliance. And the reason that we need to do something, and there was just an article in the paper um today about Bar Harbor and Brewer about um not having any kind of policy. And so um we need to do something and I'm in agreement with that. Um, I wasn't aware um or I didn't read the fine, I didn't fine tune it enough to see that there was um a voting restriction. Um, I agree with Rob. I don't see how that's, I don't see how that's relevant. Um, so I would be um um I'd be in support of um of tabling and coming back with that removed if that's what it takes. Um, but this has been a really long process and we really do need to do something.
Can I just ask a follow up question to to that? Because I i- is there, Kyle, is there some type of inspection and safety program that that comes into play under this new language? Is that what I'm to understand?
Yeah, I I do because this is a kind of jumping of of departments. Um, with short term rentals, any rental that is um can accommodate more than two individuals is subject to um transient lodging fire code. Um, so there is, there's a difference a- as much as people want to make it the same. Um, building code and other other codes do not see residential and short term rental as the same thing.
I think we're kind of going and getting off base here a little bit. I'm supportive of this amendment. However, I think a good issue has been raised and needs to be addressed in terms of the residential aspect of it that you made. Um, I would like to see us table it, have that item addressed and bring it back at our next meeting. Can I have a motion for that effect if anybody else agrees with that? Second.
I think I have a preference toward if we're making amendments. Um, spending a little more time thinking about this issue Jeff raised about whether it is, is this the lightest touch that can accomplish the mission of bringing what is currently needs, I agree with Megan, needs to be brought into um sort of the the world as it is already existing should be brought into accordance with what is legal and we should be looking ahead toward preempting problems that have afflicted other communities where sort of out of state corporations come in and buy a bunch of lands and make things less affordable. I really agree with uh with both legalizing what is already happening and preempting those kinds of problems. Um, while really agreeing with with Jeff and Leo that the lightest touch that restricts individual freedoms uh in doing so is much to be desired. And I think if we're going back to the drawing boards, I would like to go back to the drawing boards and um and sort of look at the whole language through that lens would be my preference.
I'd like to rescind my motion. And also I just to give. So I don't think she has makes any difference. Uh, also just to give credit where it's due, Sonya was one who raised the issue of uh the voting restriction. You're just, I'm not taking credit for um.
So I would like to make the motion. Is that okay now?
Well, there is a motion on the floor. So I think I think if we're not going to table it, we need to repress the motion that's on the floor. And the motion is to approve the amendment. So.
Did I I I didn't, maybe I'm not following. I thought Sonya. Oh, so the motion was just, you're saying, because it was just to address that one thing that that's.
So Leo, we we have a motion on the floor to approve the amendment, which can be voted up or down. I suggested we table this action on this for tonight and address the concern of residency citizenship that was raised. There was no second to that motion, so that motion has died tabled. So I think we're back to the original motion and the original motion.
Oh, never. I was, that's what, that's what I was confused on parliamentary procedure because I would have uh made a motion for for tabling it in light of Rob rescinding his. Because I would still like, that is the option that I would like. I would like to table this to address the registered voter issue and then bring it back to the floor for a vote at a later meeting.
So I think that's in order. Make a motion.
That is my motion to take to table.
We need to have a second.
I do need to have a second for that so that it does not die.
And and specific to that motion, is that the only thing that's going to be addressed? Is that one thing? Is that?
I'd be interested in also having some discussion about the requirements for a who counts or who can be a a local agent. I don't know if that's popular. People are interested in also discussing that as well, but it seems.
I'm okay with having these kinds of like having a little bit more conversation around some of the smaller finer points like the one that Rob just meant. What I my goal here is instead of voting this amendment up or down tonight, I would like to table it tonight so that we can bring it back to a later meeting with some changes made for for further discussion and another vote.
I'd like to second that motion. I'll second that motion.
Table in a second.
This is like.
You don't need to discuss it. Table, let's have discussion. Um, we'll have a roll call voter on the motion table.
In counsel Perry.
In favor.
Counselor Garde in favor. Counsel Robertson.
In favor.
Counsel Wingard. Counsel Bruce.
In favor.
Counsel Kenny.
In favor.
And counsel are.
In favor.
And the vote is seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. And Kyle, thank you for all of your work and I guess it will continue. Thank you.
Now we get to have another.
Thank you.
Procedure part real.
Yeah, this is going to be, I hope, simpler. We're moving on to consent agenda. Any member of the council can remove an item from the consent agenda and I am removing um the order which dealt with the food truck. One fifty one. So that order has been removed and with that removal, are there any other adjustments to the consent agenda? And I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as adjusted.
So moved second.
All those in favor. Well, roll call.
Counsel Perry.
In favor.
Counsel Garden in favor. Counsel Robertson.
In favor.
Counsel Wingard.
In favor.
Counsel Russell in favor. Counsel Kenny.
In favor.
Counsel Laurel.
In favor.
And the vote is seven in favor and they're none opposed.
There you go. Um, so now moving on to new business. The first item under new business will be taking up the removed items, so it'll be ordered twenty two one fifty one. And the new order will read order approving habitualist license for FWOB LLC a food truck located at fifty six Main Street conditioned upon final inspection by the life safety and co enforcement officers. Can I have a motion to approve that, please?
This is where I was confused. Do we have to do the thing where we amend it and vote on amending it?
No, this is just a new order.
Okay, great.
Move approval in seconds. Thank you. Any discussion on order twenty two dash one fifty one? Roll call vote please.
Counsel Perry.
In favor.
Counsel Gardner in favor. Counsel Robertson.
In favor.
So Wingard. Counsel Russell in favor. Counsel Kenny.
In favor.
Counsel Laurel.
In favor.
And the vote is seven in favor and they're none opposed.
Okay. Moving on to order twenty two dash one fifty seven. Order authorizing the purchase of front end loader plow metal plus model P L L D one oh or two dash eighteen from Allied Equipment Department Maine and an amount not to exceed twenty eight thousand one hundred and thirty four dollars installed. Motion to approve. So second. Seconded. Mr. Yars.
Yes, good evening. So uh we had budgeted thirty thousand dollars for upfitting the new front end loader. Um, lion's share of this was going to be dedicated to the plow, which makes this piece of equipment far more valuable than what we don't have it. Um, this is the model. We have a metal plus plow on the current Dusan that we've been running for a few years now. Had great luck with it. Um, Allied Equipment has been very supportive. If we needed any kind of uh technical support, uh parts, things like that has been easy to come by. So we're recommending that we move forward with purchasing this. Um, it'll match up with the other one that we have and um
It came in under budget.
It came in under budget and it's in stock, so we'll be able to take delivery on time.
Great. Any questions from the council? Any public comments? See any? Roll call vote please.
Counsel Perry.
In favor.
Counsel Garden in favor. Counsel Robertson.
In favor.
Also Wingard.
In favor.
Counsel Russell in favor. Counsel Kenny.
In favor.
Counsel Laurel.
In favor.
The vote is seven in favor and they're none opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would be in here, Robert. Order of twenty two one fifty eight, order authorized the town manager into enter into an agreement with Haley Ward of Fangor for building energy assessment and to negotiate a contract with funds drawn from Community Resilience Partnership Grant. And who is taking this one? Motion to approve.
We'll have approval.
Seconded.
It's unusual for Sophie not to uh kick something off, but the nod of the head is sufficient. Um, this project is a um project that we identified for the Community Resilience Partnership um grant that we applied for back in March that um Megan Hess wrote um so successfully. Um, she put out an RFP and we received three responses and Haley Ward was the um highest qualified. We asked for a cost proposal and at the time of the agenda publishing, we didn't have the cost proposal back in. We have since received it. It is for seventeen thousand five hundred dollars, which is under the twenty thousand dollars that we had um budgeted for within the grant. So this um evaluation is actually going to um cover several of our facilities to make sure that our mechanical systems, our insulation, the windows, et cetera, that there's no uh kind of low hanging fruit for us to um uh capture some energy savings and then also identify some of the uh kind of bigger projects that might be um incorporated into our capital facilities plan further out.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions or comments from council on this item?
I just had one. Um, have we ever done any sort of study like this on any of these buildings in the past?
So we haven't done um formal studies. We have looked at like the Keith Anderson Community House um before. But not strictly from an energy assessment um standpoint. So we've made some small upgrades that staff can identify like replacing with LED lights and things like that. But some of the the window assessments and et cetera are kind of out of our bailiwick. Um, the buildings are also starting to reach that age. Um, well, certainly the Keith Anderson houses will be on that age. But the um town office is starting to reach that age um where some of the things that were best practices when I was in college, actually when I graduated from college, uh perhaps are no longer best practices. So um that's what we'll be doing with this assessment.
Thanks.
Could I um also like to say, yeah, I'd like to add, it's hard when you're on Zoom.
It is.
I'd like to add, I'd like to add to that. Um, we've talked about this as as a council um several times about having these energy assessments done. And this is non taxpayer money that's got that's going into this. So we're, we have an opportunity to do it. The grant was written specifically for it. Um, and um and uh like I said, Megan has done a good job of of um of keeping us um in line with um climate change and all of the the funding and the monies that is coming down the pike. And we've been waiting to do this um because we have been waiting for federal money and state money and um climate money. So this is just, I think this is just phase one of the process. Um, and then there will be another uh phase two uh grant that will be written after we get these um very crucial numbers. So um so this is not taxpayer dollars. In a way it is, but it's not Orono taxpayer dollars.
Okay, thanks. I was just curious about that. Thanks.
Any other questions? Ready for a vote? Anthony.
Counsel Perry.
Favor.
Counsel Gardner in favor. Counsel Robertson.
Yes, in favor.
Counsel Wingard.
In favor.
Counsel Russell.
In favor.
Counsel Kenny.
In favor.
And Counsel Laurel.
In favor.
And the vote is seven in favor and they're none opposed.
Thank you. Order twenty two dash one fifty nine, order adopting the charge for the Town Council's Committee on Diversity, Equity, Inclusion and Belong. Could I have a motion to approve, please? And a second.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, comments, you all had access to it. We've worked on it.
I appreciate, oh, sorry, if you want. I was going to say, we gave the town manager a really challenging charge to uh writing very specific language regarding membership, like she did an excellent job and uh reached some compromised language where I didn't think otherwise like it was easier. Thank you.
Great, great.
Yeah, and I wanted to to second that as well, that I was pleased with the resulting language and I felt that I walked the line pretty tactfully. So thank you, Sophie.
Get out.
I'd just like to say that I I know it's been a a longer process than some community members would have liked, but I feel very confident that the work that's gone into it and the crafting of this language and everything else that's gone into this is going to ensure um a a body that actually works to do the things we want to do. Like it's taken a long time, but that time has been well spent. And I believe that going forward, um I I would not be surprised if we have if we end up with more of a model of what a lot of low small communities should be doing in this in this area. Cheryl, I'm so sorry that I cut you off. Zoom is is hard.
It is hard, I know. Um, I am still having um some serious concerns about formal membership. And I um I am um I am concerned and I do know that this has taken a long time. This has been a long process and we are at this point and it's a good, it's good to be here. Um, but I am more interested in having formal membership be residents of Orono. And some of my concerns are about uh setting precedent for municipal committees. Um, and if we have a municipal committee um that represents our municipality or advises our municipality that I am um, I believe that they should be voting taxpayer residents of Orono. I have absolutely no problem with them reaching outside the boundaries of Orono if there is an issue um for advice um from a particular expert, either at the university, the Islamic Center, for example. Um, but I am still um I'm, I still believe uh truly that we need to have uh we need to have residency uh to to support a community um ad hoc committee like this, a municipal committee like this. All of our other committees are have residency, require residency. If there, if we set a precedent like this, that we can um have a membership, a formal membership on a municipal committee that do not live in our in our municipality, then I think we need to extend that to all of the committees that we have. And so that kind of precedent, I don't, I I think we need to extend it. I don't want to though. I'm saying that that this is something that I'm that I'm concerned about, that we need to have this. Um, so I'm also um I'm also concerned that people who do not live and work in, and I want to say live and work, I'm going to say live because lots of people live um outside and work in Orono because we have the university here. It's one of the biggest employers in this area. But it as a as a. But it as a, as a resident, I would prefer to have people who live here, who understand the fabric of Orano, who send their kids to Orano schools, who vote here and who pay taxes here to be our representatives on any kind of municipal committee, not just this one. So I'm still, I'm going to stick to my guns here, guys. I, I, I approve of everything. My concern is that one formal membership, and that's my concern.
Thank you for expressing your concern, Cheryl.
I would like to maybe ask Cheryl, do you, is voting a major sticking point for you in this? Because I mean, I think we were just discussing the fact that having a voting requirement was perhaps discriminatory. I would say it's discriminatory, sort of equitably around housing issue. And I think the same thing would be happening here. There are people who are permanent residents that the rest of your desired qualifications who still can't vote.
Voting is, voting is a, is a part of residency, but if they're not eligible or if they choose not to vote, that is not, that's not an issue for me. Residency, though, however, calling Orano home, living here, paying taxes here. If you have children going to schools, be being the fabric of Orano, that's, that's what I would like to see. Again, I have no problem with having an advisory, you know, having people who, if a particular issue comes up and there are people that have expertise in that issue, which happens with the committee that I chair, happens, and then if we have an issue that we need to address, we can reach outside that committee. I get that. I understand that. That's not anything that I would ever object to. Expertise is expertise, but as far as formal membership on a municipal ad hoc committee, I truly believe that they need to be residents of the town that they are part of. So, I mean, they are part of that committee. And and I just, I don't have any problem again with reaching out if you have to reach out. But I'm really seriously concerned that we are going to set a precedent for for committees in the future. If we have any more committees that are going to happen in the future, we're going to set a precedent that anyone can be on our committees who has expertise, who travels through Orano, who works in Orano, who worships in Orano, but who doesn't live here. And and that's, and that's that's concerning for me. That's concerning for me. Voting, if you choose not to vote, you choose not to vote. That's okay, but if you're eligible and you, if you're eligible to vote and you, and you, you're registered to vote, I'm just trying to find a definition of residency that that fits with what I'm trying to explain. So for me, that's a definition. But if you, but if we have issues that are on a ballot or up for referendum, if we have issues that that come to a vote, then it would be nice to have the committee members be part of that process. So, and I'm saying formal, I'm saying the formal committee, when we start to think about who is going to be on that formal committee.
I would like to just say, I hear, I hear what Cheryl's saying. I'm not concerned though about the residency requirement, setting a precedent or not having a residency requirement, setting a precedent for two reasons. One is that the charge of any committee is council's prerogative. So I, I don't, I don't think that we are beholden to allowing anyone who doesn't live here to be on a committee if we allow it in this specific instance. And the second reason is because I think there is a recognizable difference in why we might want to include individuals who might not physically reside in this community, but are very much part of the fabric of this community. And I do hear the attempt of compromise of like, well, they could be, they could be brought in as experts or to come in and to give guidance or something, but there's also, there is a distinct difference about the unique perspective that can be brought to the process itself. And one of the things that we have struggled with from the inception of this committee and with the work that we're doing is as a council that, I mean, I'm, I'm, has there ever, I'm trying to think, but like, we have not had any significantly diverse representation on this elected body in very specific categories, racial being one of them, but in many other ways. And when we started this process, we really sat around and very frankly said, we're a room full of white people and we have blind spots that are dictated by our privilege, so we cannot necessarily create this process. What we need to do is to allow the committee to create the process, to see the things that we cannot see. And I think that bringing someone in as a guest or an expert or someone to give guidance, but not allowing them access to the formal power structure goes completely against, as much as I don't think that anyone's thinking of it that way. And I hear the objection. I think that it goes against what we're trying to accomplish here. And part of what we're trying to accomplish here as a room full of individuals who may have other intersecting identities, but have some very privileged ones who are in positions of power is, is allowing for, if we're going to cede an amount of influence to this group that we are convening, that we don't gatekeep who can be part of that group based on something as specific as where they might live, despite what unique and diverse perspectives they could bring to this committee and be part of the fabric of Orano. And I think that that might be very uncomfortable for some of us and maybe even some folks in the community, but that's part of doing this work is being uncomfortable, giving up control of things. And I feel very strongly that there, there is, it's not the same thing to have an expert or a special guest or a speaker or someone come in to give technical guidance as it is to actually participate in the, in the creation of the process of how this group is going to interact with town government.
And I would like to offer another perspective. Another perspective from a person that, that we've, we've had several conversations about this. And the perspective is coming from a community where people step in who are not part of the community and offer advice and offer consult in, in a way that is detrimental to the, to the community. And I'm talking about, I'm talking about my partner who has lived through this. And so there are two perspectives here. There is a community of people who have been told and have outside, outside people come in and think that they know best what to do for this community. And and then there is the perspective that we need those people in here to, to help us and guide us. So, so there's two different ways to look at this. My, what I'm, what I'm concerned about is that we are, that we need to have, we need to have residency in Orano because we are a municipality and we are a local government. And the definition of local is that we live in this community and we work in this community and we raise children in this community and we know what's going on in this community. And so that's my, that is my concern. And there are, there's, there's different ways to look at it. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave, I'm gonna leave it at that. So thank you so much.
Cheryl, I appreciate you sharing that concern. I also have the same concern. And maybe a little nuance with what Rob was asking about, I think. I do think it's residency and residency is correct, just plainly if you, if you reside here. Whether you are Canadian or whatever and can't vote, I, I, I don't think you have to be able to register to vote, but I think if you live in the community, you are, you're a resident and that, that, that seems like a pretty easy litmus test there. And I, I share your concerns and I think that should be a requirement as well.
Okay, we've heard that perspective and any further comments on this?
I just want to say that I think there are people who are regularly coming into town, not just passing through, but worshiping here, going to school here, or not residents, but they are part of the fabric of this community. And to say otherwise, I, I, I would disagree with quite strongly. So I'd just like to say that, although I appreciate more people are coming from wanting this to make sure that, you know, we are a community taking care of each other and not having people who are not part of the community at all be a part of this. I appreciate that perspective, but I think there are people who are part of this community who don't fit under your current definition of the proposal.
We have a participant with their hand up.
Belle?
Yes, we have John Banks with his hand raised.
Yeah, John.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak again. I have been following this, this process since the beginning. And being a Penobscot Nation tribal member myself and a long-term employee with the tribe, I was particularly interested in the section of the matrix that deals with the interactions between the committee and the Penobscot Nation. And I was thinking about maybe going through that, you know, piece by piece at some point, but that's a lot to unpack. And I really wouldn't know where to start. So what I'm, what I'm going to say is just a short saying that I've heard within the tribal communities many, many times, which is, don't talk about us without us, please. And so with that in mind, I would hope that this committee and the town would establish a relationship and open up communications with the Indian Island community. And perhaps some members of the tribe would become part of some sort of advisory group or advisory committee. But I don't think that those members of the Indian Island community should be able to actually vote as core members of this group. Because they're not residents of Orano. And this is an ad hoc committee of the, of the council, the Orano council. And so that would be one perspective that I wanted to share. So thank you.
Thank you, John. Any further comments?
Can I say, I, I was very concerned about the residency requirement. You know, over the past couple of weeks, I've thought about the difference between becoming a member of DEI committee and another committee based on your technical expertise. And it seems to me that membership on this committee is based on characteristics that are intrinsic and inseparable from somebody's person. And if that's different from some external knowledge or technical expertise, and if the council determines that an applicant brings some quality to a committee like this, that we don't possess within the rest of the applicant pool, the resident applicant pool, I think that might strengthen this committee. So I, I hear that concern. I have that concern. For me, this language that says it's town council's preference to see members who reside in Orano, however, other applicants can be considered satisfies that for me and for me as well.
Ready for vote on this?
Could I ask one more question, please?
Sure.
How many committee members, because there's no limit, how many committee members can be who can be, cannot have residency in our
in this. I don't think, I don't think that there's any, there's any indication of that in the charge other than preference will be given to Orano residents. So to me, that, that speaks quite strongly by itself. Any other response? Okay, Nancy?
Council Perry.
In favor.
Council Gardner in favor. Council Robertson.
Not in favor.
Council Wingard.
In favor.
Council Brooksell in favor. Council Kenny.
In favor.
Council Laurel.
In favor.
And the vote is six in favor and one opposed.
Thank you, and we will revisit this as we get applications and appointments. And the last order, order twenty-two dash one sixty, order authorized the town manager to carry forward FY twenty-two expense budget account balances remaining in the following accounts. Police watch guard video system. Police wage and benefit up to sixty-five hundred for seasonal Gould's landing staff. Police cruiser for installation of equipment. Fire department fire hose. Public Works pickup truck up to fifty thousand dollars. Town managers professional services, IT consultant services. I assume Sophie that you're going to take this one? Motion to approve?
So moved.
The second?
Second.
Yep. Sophie, go on.
Each year as we go through the close of the books, we find projects that are still underway that had been started, conceived of, ordered, but not expended in the prior year. We need to pull these funds forward. Gould's Landing is something that council had indicated they wanted to do this year. We have funds remaining in the police budget to allow for that this year. So we are still waiting for the final bills to come in, which is why there are not specific numbers there. We will do those journal entries for whatever is remaining up to the amounts if listed. Some of those accounts might not have anything in them, in which case we might have to rethink this year's expenses. So the town manager's professional service line would be one of those, but if there are funds remaining, there are two projects currently underway that require additional funding. So that's what the carryforwards are for. I will be coming back to you in September with some final carryforwards and the A three, which is where you list out the reserve balances. You just, you approve those each year before the auditor comes in. We've got some recommended changes this year. I, I wanted to be able to spend a little bit more time with that before we brought it in September.
Thank you, Sophie. Questions for Sophie or comments?
Why can't everything neatly fit into a fiscal year? It's very rude.
That is the question.
Anything else? Ready for vote on this?
Council Perry.
In favor.
Council Gardner in favor. Council Robertson.
Yes, in favor.
Council Wingard.
In favor.
Council Brooksell in favor. Council Kenny.
In favor.
Council Laurel.
In favor.
And the vote is seven in favor and then none opposed.
Thank you, Nancy. Council committee representative reports. Finance committee has met since our last meeting. We had a request for a modification of how we use flags on Main Street. We had a long discussion about that and we're going to be working on a policy that will guide us in that regard. We also talked at our finance committee meeting about the town procurement policy and the need to revise that policy. And I know Sophie is working on that and we will see that again shortly. Other committee reports?
Yes, the complaint committee, after being quiet for a long time, was very active last week. We started with a discussion of the low impact development model ordinance guidelines for required to submit a model ordinance. I don't know, placeholder type situation to the state. By September first, we have some feelings about the way that this process has been dictated to us by the state, but we are very much in favor of low impact development. And staff is going to do its very best to give us a box in which we can work on this ordinance going forward. We also discussed the proposed homestay ordinance, which we discussed tonight at length and tabled. We discussed the contract zone for the Tyler Technology Building, which we already heard from, heard about tonight in public hearing. And finally, we reviewed a draft of a proposed ordinance provision to reduce minimum parking standards. And we are all very pleased to discuss reducing minimum parking standards for construction of residences. The end.
Thank you.
Community development has met a couple of times their last people committee meeting. One of those meetings, we talked about the Wicker Park and Ban ordinance and planned to follow up discussion on that. Subsequent to that, we spoke about the DEI committee charge, we just voted on. Uh, subsequent to that, we spoke about the DEI committee charge, we just voted on. Uh, we had a discussion on Orano Music Water District's coordination referendum process, and we had a visit from Sheriff Tori Gordon and Commissioner Sam Bourne regarding expansion of Penobscot County Jail. Um, we also met outside of the community development meeting for our first um building and infrastructure community conversation.
Other reports? Cheryl, did you have anything from the environment committee?
No, we didn't meet in July. Thank you.
Let me ask for a brief summary of the uh community conversation. Sure, I, yeah, and we planned, we're gonna have another version of this meeting online, so we don't have the, the total input yet.
Yeah.
But essentially, uh, what happened, we had a moderated discussion with our consultants from Haley Ward. Uh, we went through the four buildings in question that the town owns, uh, we asked the community what their wants and needs were regarding infrastructure, and we built a really pretty extensive list. So I think we're gonna go through a very similar process in an online forum, and then we'll have like the big list that we can come back to. So, did I capture that, Sophie?
Thanks so much.
Just, uh, is, are the copies of that list available, Jeff? We're gonna produce copies, both of you, because we want to make sure we have all the voices. Thanks.
We will also, we'll also have minutes, yeah, we'll also have minutes for um that meeting. Uh, unfortunately, Megan has been called out of the office, she and I jointly took minutes, so we're gonna work through that next week and get them to Haley Ward. Uh, once those minutes are up and out for the community to see, um, people have something to kind of respond to. There's also a form on the front page of the website that people can click on and share their thoughts um about the, the building.
Okay, future agenda items, items of concern? Any future agenda items, folks, or items of concern?
Just, have we received um anything further from the state with regards to the tax deferral program or no? I, I've seen stuff on uh people, maybe state legislators and stuff, posting, posting things like, here's three requirements, if you fit them, reach out to your town. So that's already coming out, I, I'm curious if we have anything when they reach out to us that we've been given and can share.
Yeah, we have an application.
Oh, it is, the applications are there.
Yeah, it's, it's a state application. I think we are working to make some modifications on the, the website, there's some language up right now on the assessors page. Um, right now, we just have a lot of things fighting for the front page of um the website, so we're trying to kind of figure out how to make that work. But yes, we have all that.
Gotcha, so anybody could call.
And if people stop and they can get them downstairs in the office. Okay, public petitions? I don't believe we have any. Do we have any public comments, Bill? Anyone in the public who wants to make a comment?
No hands are raised at this point.
Thank you. Um, then we have an executive session um pursuant to MRSA four oh five, section six D, to discuss ongoing collective bargaining negotiations between the town of Orano and the Orano Association of Police, the main association of police, Orano Unit. And I would like a motion to go into executive session for that verse. And a second, second. There will be no formal business taking place at the end of the executive session, we will strictly come back into public session and adjourn. Vote on the motion to go into executive session, please.
Counsel Gert?
In favor.
Counsel Gardner, in favor. Counsel Robertson?
In favor.
Counsel Windgar?
In favor.
Counsel, Counsel Berthel?
In favor.
Counsel Kenny?
In favor.
And Counsel Arwin?
In favor.
And the vote is seven in favor and then none opposed.
And Counsel Kenny, do I understand that you have to leave us in order of, so if you disappear, it's not because you're angry with anything that's being said, it's that you have a previous commitment and you're leaving us in order of?
That is correct, sir. Thank you.
And can I, could I clarify, please? Um, Sophie, we're just um zooming back in, same.
So I sent out a link uh to a meeting. Yeah, you should have gotten it earlier today.
Okay.
If you don't, text me.
Um, okay.
And Belle, are you planning to run that meeting or, or am I all set to do that?
You are all set to do that unless you need me.
No, I, I am good. Let me, just give me just a couple of minutes to get this set up, and Mitch, you should be all set?
All set.
Okay.
Our, our people remote are gonna have to leave us and come back in. Okay.
Yep, and Mitch is gonna reset you.
Great.
Thanks, Mitch.